I'd like to call the meats order and drop in our visitors. And if you have a cell phone, would please cut it off until the meat is over. And if you would, let's spend a couple weeks' time.
Father in heaven, we thank you for this day and for all the blessings of it. We pray, Lord, that as we meet to discuss the town's business, that we look what's best for each person and try to make the right decisions. Be with us through our meeting. Thank you for our service, men and women wherever they're at tonight. We pray for their safety, Lord. Pray that they may brought home soon to be your will. That's these blessings and favors in your name.
Item number two on the agenda is need a motion to cover only the items on the agenda.
I like motion to cover only the items on the agenda.
Out of motion, give a second. Coleman, second, on the table.
Ask the clerk to read our minutes of our last meeting.
The town council of the town of Hackenberg met in regular session at Hackenberg Town Hall on Monday, June 3rd, 2013 at 6:00 p.m. Mayor Cochran called the meeting to order and the roll was called with the following results: present as listed, guests as listed. Mayor Cochran said the meeting was open for the transaction of business. Motion was made by Councilmember Williams, second by Councilmember Colton, to cover only the items on the agenda. Voting as follows, all A's and A's. Mayor Cochran asked the clerk to read the minutes of the meeting. Minutes were read from the May 28th, 2013, and May 6th, 2013 meetings. After reading of the minutes, motion was made by Councilmember Emerson, second by Councilmember Shackelford, to accept as presented. Voting as follows, all A's and A's. The clerk presented the council with a financial statement for period ending May 2013. After looking over the same, motion was made by Councilmember Williams, second by Councilmember Colton, to accept as presented. Voting as follows, all A's and A's. Mayor Cochran asked the council to view a handout given to them by the clerk and rule on paying the bills. Motion was made by Councilmember Sweeney, second by Councilmember Shackelford, to pay all payroll, rent due, and bills as listed by Ben and the names. Voting as follows, all A's and A's. Beds were opened and publicly read aloud for the 1988 E1 pump. The only bid received was for burn, fire, and rescue in the amount $23,505. After a brief discussion, motion was made by Councilmember Williams, second by Councilmember Emerson, to award the bid to burn, fire, and rescue in the amount of $23,505. Voting as follows, all A's and A's. Motion was made by Councilmember Colton, second by Councilmember Sweeney, to renew our participation in the 10-year Marion County Solid Waste Management Plan. Our appropriated cost share will be $682.20. Voting as follows, all A's and A's. Motion was made by Councilmember Williams, second by Councilmember Shackelford, to pass a resolution to participate in the 2013 School Sales Packs Holiday, beginning 12:01 a.m. on Friday, August 2nd, 2013, and ending at 12:00 midnight on Sunday, August 4th, 2013. Voting as follows, all A's and A's. The mayor and council had a discussion on the July 1st, 2013 meeting date. This being the 4th of July week, the council agreed to meet only once during the month of July. The next regularly scheduled town council meeting will be July 15th, 2013, at 6:00 p.m. Motion was made by Councilmember Shackelford, second by Councilmember Williams, to pass a resolution authorizing and approving formal amendment number one, the multifamily housing, Hackenberg Housing Authority Project for CDVG Project DTR-12-04, and authorize for the mayor to sign any and all documents to complete the formal amendment process. Voting as follows, all A's and A's. Motion was made by Councilmember Sweeney, second by Councilmember Emerson, to pass a resolution authorizing and approving formal amendment number one. Now, this is downtown revitalization. For project number CDVG DTR-12-04, and authorize for the mayor to sign any and all documents necessary to complete the formal amendment process. Voting as follows, all A's and A's. Motion was made by Councilmember Sweeney, second by Councilmember Colton, to grade and gravel the following drives. Those are as listed. Voting as follows, all A's and A's. There being no further business to come before the council, motion to adjourn was made by Councilmember Williams, second by Councilmember Colton, with demand of a vote thereon to adjourn, meeting adjourned at 6:26 p.m.
Heard the reading of the minutes, are there any corrections or additions that needs to be made this time? If not, have a motion to clarify if that's presented.
Make a motion.
All members submit a motion. Give a second.
I'll second.
Jury, we're in second, all in favor?
All.
Item number four is a financial statement. The general funds, $157,448, '17. Sanitation funds, $7139, '13. Fire department, $14,62130. Three funds is totaled $179,20860. Out of the fire department funds, $14,000, that is earmarked. $7500 of the green, uh, cent, and the other is the money that's been donated to buy a generator. So, gas tax funds is $537703. Street funds is $17,90124. Total of $23,27827. Park and recreation is $1,150.71. City capital improvement, $40,42884. Occupational fund is $30.43. Total involved, all accounts is $2449685. And the school tax is $107,32781. And reserve school tax is $47733. And Hackenberg tornado relief fund is $1,009.89. That all the funds is in, is in the financial statement. What was the total for a generator? Uh, David, what is the total for the generator? They don't have enough funds to buy the air system.
It's either 68 or 72. I hadn't seen him, what's the, uh, that, 68 or 72, I'm sure.
It's getting close for a minute.
Yeah. Seems like he told me about like $1400 or something like that, is what he told me. Whatever that may have been.
Are there any other questions on the financial statement? When you collected the money? Yes. Any other questions? We have a motion to accept. Jamie made the motion to accept the financial statement. Do the second. Barney, second, all in favor? Item number five is paying up the bills. Does anyone have any questions?
Uh, revenue, $2,899.15, our expenditure, $57,166. So, daily income, minus $2,282.
Anybody have any questions? Need a motion to pay the bills?
I like a motion to pay the bills.
Jury made a motion, need a second.
Second.
Narrow, second, all in favor? Item number six, topics to discuss. Old business, we purchased one. Overbeen approved, purchased one. Master car system, we're gonna have an island built to set it on. So, what, council, what others, uh, wants on that, get someone to do that, or we want to just jump in and build a farm, get some seed out, and put it in it?
No, isn't it just like ours, just a little square?
It will be, no, it's, I want it to be square, it's probably, it's probably a three to six, four to six, something like that. Which is gonna have a V, we gotta put conduit in it for the computer, probably have to put two conduits, might as well. It's not a big project. All it's gonna do is level it on it. Location, put it, we can put it close to telephone wires, so it's gonna be trees on the ground. Getting less water from the wire. Would have any carpenters on the board?
Just use a tool.
I fixed this thing with a tool, yeah. We'll try it.
How you didn't even get ready to say?
Yes. Uh, well, it's one sort of date that everybody's showing up, can't come back. I'm not starting, I don't have it. Y'all, y'all come up with the, uh, the action.
Give him the matches, I can go.
If not, Otis is sitting down here, he can, he can take his time and come direct us.
We had a charter, too.
That's right. I already called the company, told them, you know, how long we were going to be doing that, that was still a little taking, so we get it done next few days, we get the guy setting up, we need to get them set in there, get those numbers out. Item number two, we discussed this a couple times, Christmas is not too far around the corner. We need to decide if we're gonna purchase Christmas tree flags or hang the existing lights. If we hang the existing lights, we gotta go back and put hangers on every power post for the amount of the lights that we've got. I hope it would be the, the price different, putting hangers on versus the, uh, the flag. Hangers will come with the flag, don't have to be strapped on, either mounted or abandoned on the way to the stand. We had that information one time, we said, yeah, we could go there and load it. We can't wait much longer if we don't go with the lights that come, we gotta take out all the lights we got, and see how many bubs are shot, replace them.
Expensive parts gonna be wired in.
If you go with the lights, you gotta run a pigtail down on every part. If you got 50 lights to hang, you got 50 pigtails to run, so that's pretty tight concerning the extra money. Think about it, that we'll come back next meeting night, we'll go, that's always decided beautifully. I didn't really convince them, I overlooked it.
I don't know whether we actually, we've discussed one.
Yeah, we didn't ever vote to buy that, because the price, we got the price, we said we'd think about it, come back the next meeting, we didn't put it on the gym for the next one. But, uh, by the next meeting, we need to make them see when we're there, because then we don't have to hire Patricia to come out here and run a pigtail of CPVC or conduit.
So, if you, if you done the flags, you ain't talking about no, no, some lights, you can come back here a few years down the road, get up some money, and do if you wanted to run electric in. It's gonna be pretty expensive.
Well, the flags will be pretty expensive to start out, and we, we, the amount, if you're on one of those, one time shot, maybe I have to actually tell them. And I personally like them just as well. You, and, I mean, you can use them for a lot of different things, not only just the Christmas tree lights. You can put a Hackford pattern, founders, and also, or anything else you want. We'll have more information and some calls for our next meeting. Item number three there, uh, code, discuss the closing of the pool on Sunday and decide what date to close for the year. And you have a printout in your packet there, uh, pretty, just up to date on all the expenditures and revenue and whole breakdown. And your second sheet will have the days that, and the number of, uh, people. On Sunday, the last two Sundays, we had zero. Also, we have had the best weather for a pool this year, too, it's raining a lot. I like to see us just close down on Sunday and continue on until we, uh, close it for a year.
Schools, on the 18th?
18th and 19th, one of them would be. 19th.
Saturday, the 10th?
Yeah, I think it's right. So, do y'all? The last 30, we got the 10th, closed Eric, after, uh, August, August 10th.
How does it wait for, uh, before it goes down?
Once it's all banged, uh, once all in that tube, it starts to, it's, anyway. Someone's gonna talk to me, everyone, back to the, uh, close shopping, and then, uh, paying some of them on the last week's vacation. I have a motion to close it on Sundays and close it on the 10th of August. Y'all make a motion? Give a second?
Give a second.
Sweeney, second, all in favor?
Aye. Always hate to see it close.
Uh, new business, uh, supposed to be somebody here with waste management, I don't see anyone here, I don't bring it, nobody will do, and they'll, they want to take, uh, garbage, so a two-day pickup Wednesday and Thursday, then we'll pick it all up one day on Wednesday. And they will notify, never house, all the lock on the door, put a door hanger on it, and, uh, we'll, we'll let them do that. I personally'd rather send it up one day, just to... I hope my miss will be here, Jimmy Goodwin. They probably should have looked by the night, but he wasn't here herself. Just wanna just kid you. Y'all have any problem with him?
I knew it.
They don't, they come back the next, they'll get it.
Just make sure to let them know by everybody.
They will, they'll go, they'll not believe it. So, on Thursday's route, we'll be moving back from Minas, they're not giving, we can turn that around, I don't have any day, warm us up again. I have a motion to let waste management change, pick up the days, one day a week. I'll, jury made a motion?
I'll second.
Paul, second, all in favor? Okay, item number two, get into our resolution. Resolution is to hire an engineer and architect for an economic development project, which is the grocery store. And, uh, price and rider, breathe it out for the job.
I might come up with one, our price and rider for engineers.
I have a motion, do the second.
I'll second.
Jury, second, all in favor? Resolution, uh, item number three is a resolution to hire a NACOD to provide activities, uh, deliver service for the economic development grant, that's also the grocery store. Need a motion to hire NACOD.
I make the motion, hire NACOD.
Jury make a motion to hire NACOD, give a second.
I'll second.
Barney, second, all in favor? Uh, number four, resolution to select an engineer and architect for the CDVG supplementary disaster assistance project, that's for the new monies that we're trying to get now for the street improvement, the police and municipal complex, and the farmers market convenient. And, uh, Cablewood, what is that, Hackwood? Cablewood. Cablewood, good, good for me, I was trying to think of, they graded out on that job. So, we need a, a motion to hire an engineer.
I make the motion, hire.
Barney made the motion? Give a second.
I'll second.
Jury, second, all in favor? Uh, now, number five, need a resolution to select a NACOD to provide services for the CDVG supplementary disaster assistance project for the street, police, complex, and same things. I have a motion to hire NACOD to administer.
I'll make a motion.
Paul made the motion? Jamie, second.
All in favor?
All. Item number six is a resolution to hire an appraiser in coordination with commercial development authorities. And Keys, uh, they only was one sent in, so he would have had to be graded, but, uh, could have said we could hire, and I gotta, I mean, I don't mind hiring, we just don't want him signed in contact with, sit down and try to negotiate with him, I don't, second appraisal, he was wanting $4,500. That may be in line, but that, that don't, that's not like, I don't want money, just get a second appraisal.
Who was it?
It's Key and Company.
Key and Company, Jack.
Key and Company, Jack. That's who once sent one in, could have sent these out to everyone, help yourself.
Have y'all ever dealt with them?
Never have.
Nobody else didn't want them?
Troy Moore did the original. Yeah. He can do his own. We, I mean, we still check them out, we, we can hire them and just not sign a contract and do it. So, we have a motion to hire Keys and Company?
Aye.
Jamie made the motion to hire, give a second.
I'll second.
Jury, second, all in favor?
With the, provided that you can work out the details.
Yeah, well, we still have to go back, sign the contract. Get this in the contract. Item number seven, is a resolution to terminate NACOD's contract for the multifamily housing projects, Hackenberg Housing Authority, DTR-12-04. What this is, that, uh, housing authority was kinda nut, uh, $300,000, they was gonna get out the, uh, money, out the other money. We applied and trying to get all the money to tear these down and build another 20, and David, I got a letter today, you can probably get two on that. And, uh, so, just need a motion to terminate the contract. I make the motion. Colton made the motion, do the second.
I'll second.
All in favor? Uh, resolution, item number eight, to terminate NACOD's contract on the same housing projects. Right, this is the cabinet project, they didn't get funded. There's a $350,000. Right. They didn't get funded, only, it's funded denied, and we ask for that money back, so it's been put back into our. So, there's no need for us to have a contract. So, we got the housing authority money back, uh, revitalization plan along with cabinet money. I have a motion. Barney made the motion? Give a second.
I'll second.
Jamie, second, all in favor? Item nine is a resolution to submit supplementary CDVG disaster assistance for infrastructure application.
I make a motion, we submit.
Out of motion.
I'll second.
Coleman, second, all in favor? Uh, resolution to submit supplementary CDVG disaster assistance for multifamily housing, that's Hackford Housing Authority, project, that will be, uh, demolition, tear these down, and money to rebuild, uh, 20 new ones, on the Hackenberg ground. I make the motion. Barney made the motion? Coleman, second, all in favor? And hopefully after that, David, we're gonna get them 10 built, and build 10 more, 20 more. Twenty more. That's right. They'll be the same kind. Yeah. Well, yeah, gray robe. To have seven deckers that's undeveloped, right at the present time, uh, chances we won't give another 20. Do we still have some here? Over at Gray Road? They're all red in there. It was pretty fortunate, really, this feller's offered to take our land, our money and everything, use it 15 years, and give it.
Have a good day with one, Marty.
They tiptoeed out this last year, when they came down here, and then, they'd carried about half a day with us. Uh, number 11, agreement of understanding between the town of Hackburg and the commercial development authorities, which Otis and James is on that, the other two's on vacation, one in Panama City, none in Florida. But we don't have to get them together, cannot, get that organized, because we'll be stepping away and running some things to the organization, such as property, uh, buildings, and everything.
Yes, sir, once we work out the, uh, the review appraisal, and y'all establish and get... Yes, sir, once we work out the, uh, the review appraisal and y'all establish and get the value of that property worked out officially, then it will have to be acquired through the commercial authority. So we need that, we need this agreement to allow us to...
When the other two gets back on from vacation, we're going to, yeah, they need to select the chairman out of their group and, uh, who are the other two? Uh, Warren and Ronnie Anna?
But you still need this tonight, though, don't you, this resolution?
Yes, sir.
I make the motion. Barney make the motion? Do a second.
I'll say.
Jamie second, all in favor?
Aye.
All. Number twelve. Uh, we've looked at the ditch from the swimming pool or just a little north of the swimming pool, all the way to Elrod Street. Uh, it's grown up on both sides, I've already got easement sign on the property to, uh, the farmers down there to, I mean, that leaves between the, that's, that's terrible. Big ditch, maybe sloped down, big ditch.
That was...
Well, that's where Jerry lives, about to wash it away, I don't know how it's standing now.
I'm surprised you're watching.
It's half a mile down, it's probably fixing to be more, probably fixing to be eighty percent.
Other than the current term, right?
Yeah. It's, uh... Yeah, I talked to, I talked to two, three different guys, Dozier's, and they're ninety dollars an hour to a hundred and twenty, some at twenty.
It's all real good.
We can...
That COVID, stop.
There's a lot more. I can operate a Dozier.
I can take that one or something.
If it's a day, it's certainly going to be tough.
If we hear it's coming.
General fund? Yeah, could come out. Yeah, well... Probably some out there. What was it?
What care?
Dozier, Clinton, he's out. David, I've talked to, uh, Gillan, and I've talked to, uh, that was Ford Green and King, I hold a house in part of it, and I've talked to, uh, he's working down there, had, uh, a hand in the till on that, the guy that owns, uh, nice Ferguson place, he's working on the lot right there, deep back. Gillan's got, uh, that's a John Deere that's quoted, D six, I think it's ninety dollars an hour. And Ford Green's got about a D five, D six, and it's about ninety dollars per hour, so, uh, it's going to be from ninety to a hundred and twenty, according to my size Dozier that you get in there to do it. We got, uh, I want, if we approve this, I want, I'll get one, two of them up here, just look at it and see what they think. So the ditch we smoke, where it can be bush hogged and take care of it after one time, get it cleaned up, it's, uh, it's terrible.
We need to do bid on something, or it's tired.
Nah, if you, if you need it done, David, you know, you don't have to do business, it's a simple, uh... And, and all, everybody's about the same, if you got a D six, it's about, everybody gets about the same amount per hour. If it's a D eight, it's about, you know, a little more, it's, everybody, charge is about the same, they all have it, the ditch.
Is that part seventy-five or fifteen, you got?
Fifteen.
Fifteen thousand now? We don't, you know, we're close, I hope to that. But we need to get a couple just down there to look at it and see, uh, what they, uh, they might not, so they might not want to attack it.
I make the motion, we take care of it.
I'll say. Jamie made the motion, uh, Darrell second, all in favor?
Aye.
It's a problem, I've looked there before. You have to, you have a hood. Hey, I'm number five, you made the motion. It's a problem. That might take care of Elrod Street too. I wish the second man, balling in all that. Item number thirteen, Jeremy Mark wants to attend the LPI Fire Armed Instruction Force, it's two weeks, that's a gap. And I think the town, the outstanding side is two weeks, I think that is easy. The student is free. That's, that's two weeks that we'd have to, don't pay, you know, for those. We don't have one, you can't, used to be the, uh, instructor.
This is why you be as an instructor.
He's going to that, that instructor's course, that way he can teach the other guys, which they all have to go to firing range every year.
Yeah, I understand that.
He can be the instructor, he could be the, uh...
I think he could.
Yeah.
I make the motion, we're going to do it for it.
Jury make the motion?
I'll say.
Darrell second, all in favor?
Aye.
All. Number fourteen, fire department, we sold the fire truck, discussed here, they'd like to have six thousand dollars from the sale of the fire, uh, truck to be put into the fire department funds. I don't have any outstanding deals, but we, we got some outstanding that will be enough money in the fire, in the, in the, in the fire department funds right now to pay. And I'd like to see the balance of it, the interest paid on the fire department note, the balance put on the principal, council will leave twenty-three, five hundred five. Yeah. It's worth it to go, it's worth it. We pay the interest up to date, and balance it on the note. Is that all ready, y'all?
Sounds good.
How much you gonna put, how much you gonna put in? Just by the bill or... Six thousand. We'd have to cut the one back out during the funds, we don't have it. They still, we'll have to have a few things for the ladder truck, and odds and ends, and tire down then. Out of motion to...
I make the motion.
To put the six thousand in and pay the interest up and balance on the, uh, note? Is that, that's a motion you're making, Jerry?
Yes.
Okay, do a second on that.
I'll say.
All second, all in favor? We get three thousand dollars back on the next item now. Number fifteen, David, uh, checking with Hamilton and all, they're going to pump, test the trucks, we have three, we're going to get done this year. We've been paying eleven, twelve hundred dollars for each truck, that's probably thirty-four, thirty-six hundred dollars. And we're going to give them all, three, approximately two hundred dollars each.
Which I said I'd pay, I expected to.
It shouldn't.
What we've been doing, I sold a margin, send them every year, um, to have tested. We've been having maintenance on the same schedule. Uh, we looked at the hours since the truck that we sold was our primary truck, it had the most hours on it, it would need to be serviced this year. But we looked at the hours on the other two, and we can load it to next year financially. Uh, we don't know if we'll do this at this cheap every year, because some don't need maintenance. But what we're going to try to do is set up a program where every year we don't get hit with like four thousand dollars, we kind of leapfrog it out. Uh, same way with the area, it's good for this year, but we're going to have it certified next year, which this year we made eleven hundred dollars because we have certified out there. I've got, so far I've got, I've got six hundred fifty bucks, so we're going to have, uh, being able to, somebody's going to come here and do it, and I ain't figuring any fuel costs, what was costing us fuel. We probably, that's another thousand dollars probably for three trucks, it would save on fuel, just by doing it here. Uh, that's, you know, if we had something that we felt like being uncomfortable with trucks shooting oil or something, yeah, go ahead and get maintenance, but there's no reason to do that, because the trucks that we're sending for maintenance now, they don't have enough fires on the channel. So I'd be excited, I'd do that.
That's just, I just put that on there so you know what's, what's going on, so we realize a, a, that. Item sixteen is, uh, passion streets, uh, they working on the cost today, and this didn't get it completed and get it back to us in time, uh, for this, but, uh, the street, they got, uh, who's on the street, Paul and, uh, Jay? No, Jerry, Jerry and Paul. Uh, I tell you, the roads I rode out with them today, told me we were going to ride out some more, uh, just don't be too expensive anyway, we don't. There's Eagle Road, you don't hear a road, uh, Union Hill Cemetery Road, and Cannon Road twenty-one. We rode out to Red Road, they, we got, where the trucks turned into Chicken House, we can patch that and probably stay off of that. And, uh, on, uh, just the Union Hill Road, going up to Trick Gardens, uh, that's not bad, so we might, uh, be able to patch one or two little places in there. The other road is, is terrible. And they actually, they are bad, but we got some that's just as bad, but the reason it didn't cover them is because, and the disaster area, that's what we've been working on with the survey, that we've asked the two and a half million dollars to resurface, uh, in the areas where the storm hit to the streets, so... Hopefully we'll get some of that, or all of it, we done, we'll, we'll be back in the gravel, uh, for, for soon, because it's, it's terrible. And it is costly because, uh, Curtis, we was working up the streets as we went, I said, just wait, I won't sit off one time. About to have a hard time out there on that street.
See, it's no way that before I left, just seeing that, them that was so bad, that it wouldn't be no, no more than three to four hundred dollars a street to do the, with that big machine, do the whole thing instead of just patching it, comping it up.
Yeah, that's, uh...
He said it would be no more than three to four hundred.
It was just, it would be called sealing, and they'll seal them, it's just like doing the whole road. And, uh, the Heaton Hills and, uh...
Harold.
Harold, going down to Harold Amy. Uh, they're terrible. We patched, matter of fact, we probably put a half a load, about fourteen hundred dollars of, of plant mix last Friday, this past Monday.
Why is those, those roads are not traveled as much as like my household, Union Hill Cemetery Road is traveled all the time.
They, the thing of it is, they haven't been patched or sealed in years. If you go, if you, if you go past three years, after one time it's done again, you'll pay double cost the next year if you can get them completed.
Great group. Is it the road builder in...
Yeah.
And they researched it.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, we just, right, we turn in, come off in one twenty-one, the hot board will take you right, and Chicken House down on the left, right, we turn in, there's some pivot tile places, but we can put plant mix back in there. We can overtake that whole road and probably Union Hill Road, uh, but, you know, Jerry and Paul, that's going to look at them. We'll have the cost back probably next day to...
One thing that's scary about it is, so Curtis has won't let us either assume that, whether to put that plant mix down, the other cold mix, that it's really doing good, but they're afraid to, Mike's going to look at it, because he's afraid that the tar may not stick to it.
After you start, I think it'll be there six weeks, it'll be all right, maybe a month, six weeks, you're right, it's real soft, but what they can do, they can, uh, spray that, they can seal the big spots where we just put, do, on, then come back and seal all, the whole thing again. So that's, uh, but I know we've got very little capital to use on it and, uh...
They can spend up to ten thousand dollars a day, close to it.
Yeah, actually, totally, up to about thirteen thousand.
So they can't stand very many days.
And that could be on one or two roads. Uh, I got some cost in there, we went on a day, but I'll wait until they get it, um, exact, so, uh...
Don't have to hurt me days.
Uh, and on this, we're going to have a work session on Tuesday night at six o'clock, and we'll vote on this until we get some calls back, and, uh, we can discuss it and do it next meeting, because they still are going to be patching and sealing for the next four or five weeks. This is true way doing that, right? Yes, we discussed this, the work session, and we'll put it back on there again. Uh, item seventeen is Marion County Commission, Communication Expediteers, this is two thousand and twelve. And thirteen, it's almost time for them to send us another one. We, we owe thirteen thousand, eight sixty-eight, seventy-four, and, uh, that's for our communication from police department through the county, so we'll have to pay it if we get service from them. And I don't really mean to go ahead and pay this, since we got the money a day to do it, I'm going to have to carry the other one for a year. I'll motion to pay the Marion County Commission.
I make the motion.
All makes the motion? Do a second.
All say.
Jury second, all in favor?
All.
Uh, item eighteen is Alabama League of Miss Palti, dues, uh, eight hundred fifty-three dollars. Cobra made the motion, pay? Do a second.
I'll say.
Jamie second, all in favor? All. Item nineteen, uh, property that needs to be cleaned up, old buildings that need to be tore down, property owners have disposed of. We talked about this in two, three meetings, and, uh, wrote letters to the landowners, and, uh, some of them, they signed up the letters, but they never acknowledged getting them or coming to clean up the property. And I've talked to Scott on this, and, uh, I've, I've looked at a lot of, uh, different ones, ordinance, and, uh, so Scott's going to have to find us one to work, just for Hackleburg, because, and one I've read, a pretty good ordinance, but it, it either leaves things out, uh, if no houses ever get on there, definitely much you can do about that, then, uh... And some of it, Scott, if you do one, you gotta do a lot of, we got a lot of, uh, farms inside the city limits of Hackleburg that got cattle running under property and horses and, uh, they gotta have millions to feed the livestock, so Scott, why don't you go up there? If you had time, I know we didn't give you much notice of it.
Yes, sir, I would get some, some of them, there's state laws, there's a couple of different statutes that they're specific with, uh, tearing down buildings, and there's a couple of different procedures at the time of use to do that. Um, there's also laws about, uh, abatement of nuisances, and I think Russell, um, had something similar, that we don't, we don't have anything that's, that's specific with nuisances and those kind of issues.
So you sent, you sent him a copy of Russell, what Russell sent us?
Yes, yeah, I, I just looked at that, so that's probably something where, and we have something in place that, um, can work, but we probably need to put a little more juice into it, and I can look at that and see maybe some of that.
Maybe you have it ready, that we can discuss that too next Tuesday, a work session, that, uh, you know, we're going to have to, some of us not going to be happy, but that's, we got to clean her up. We, it's been here now going on three years, and, uh, and some of it, I tell you, blue will get you a bit, and, uh... Hopefully, uh, the long blue money goes through NACOD, that one side of the street will be taken down pretty soon, and we'll see something written on it. Uh, daycare center, they looked at it, and I talked to Randy Price, the property owner, so, uh, I talked to the, the group today that wants to do that, and they're in contact now with Randy, but I told them I just going to back out of it, I got to negotiate the prices and things, so, uh... That's what we do, this guy, we'll just follow up, uh, if you have it ready, not at the next meeting. We'll have, uh... Go back to the work session, next Tuesday at six. We'll post you after. Uh, item number twenty is just discussed, the Hackburg NACOD's coming up, all the separate quarters, if we get a lot of this cleaned up before then, it'll make the town look a lot better. Uh, if, if the landowners just cut their own brats and weeds and things, it'll make it a thousand percent better, so just be aware of that, it'll be long during the first bid, we'll see. Item number twenty is, uh, David Critten, when we hired him here, we had very little money and still don't have very much. Tim Walker, and David's done a good job, people lots appear in town, and, uh, I think that we should hire him so he can get the benefits like other employees, that, uh, if he had sickness or something in his family, then it has to be of, he wouldn't have any income whatsoever, so if he can build, build the days and build the retirement, uh... Oh, we did, we did swap him one to left to, to David, so... did swap one to left to David, so it's, it's the same cost that we was already paying anyway. I'll make the motion.
I'll hire him.
Jury is second, all in favor. We need to move him, well, we'll move him up to graduate patrol pay, just put that in the same motion, same motion, move him up to patrol pay, what the other guys get. We still have to, oh, yeah, we still have to, or two, you'll have one, but you may have five or six workers, that one, rotate the shoe. And maybe send a few there more, and another two for a few weeks, working on the projects. Item number twenty-two, is the AACOP twenty thirteen summer conference, Paul Mark, I always wait to make sure it's an orange peach. Not only that, he can't get all the school in one week, and he has to go back for the second. They have a motion, okay, the chief to go to, to the school, to get his hours. Jamie made the motion?
I'll second.
All second, all in favor. Item seven, Gravel and Gray Driveways, Cindy Bridges, Marie Adams, Ryan LeBauer, and Jonathan LeBauer, have a motion to gravel and break these drives. Colvin made the motion, he is second.
I'll second.
Jury is second, all in favor. Make a motion to Jerry.
I'll make a motion.